A couple announcements that everybody's pretty much aware. There are refreshments in coffee and tea bag there. Help yourself to that, please. So without anything else, if you've got a question for me, I'll be in the back of the room after our lecture. Our lecture today is part of the history of the Penfield Planning Board, plus different events that are on the books now for the Planning Board, and what future events might be happening in Penfield. And our speaker is Mark Valentine, and he is an engineer, and he's been with the Planning Board for a couple of years now, but with the town longer than that. So, Mark, the floor is yours.
Thanks, Charlie.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you all for coming out today. If I'm not speaking loud enough, please wave your arms in the back of the room. I'll try to speak up. We do have it on video, if you can go back and watch it later also. Thanks, Dave, for that. As Charlie said, my name is Mark Valentine. I came to the town in 2004. Worked on the private side as an engineer before that. Was in the engineering department up until two years ago, and then as of two years ago, taken over in the planning department. So going to talk today a little bit about the Planning Board itself. Prior to that, going to give a little history, a little background, some pictures of historical sites in Penfield, and then talk about how development has moved forward throughout the town, and how that's influenced the way our zoning code has gone, how our Planning Board, you know, reacts to that, and what their role is in that. And then talk a little bit about our Planning Board members, and then at the end, show you some pictures of current projects we have, projects you may see coming forward. And then depending on how much time we have, I do have a few town board application projects that are not related to the Planning Board that I can show you those also. I have some display items here. You're welcome to look at afterwards. I will refer to some of the comprehensive plans. We have open space documents, SECR, State Environmental Quality Review Act. Some of those documents, I brought those. We also have some display boards in the back. I did bring a sample showing kind of what the Baytown Plaza area is going to look like. We have two mixed-use areas on those boards. And then over here, I also have a map showing a watershed map. So just kind of different display items that you're welcome to take a look at afterwards. As we go through this, if you do have questions, please jump in. We can keep this interactive if you want. A little bit of the presentation overview, as I had talked about, doing a little background on the town itself. I assume everybody here is from Penfield, but I do have a little brief synopsis of the town, talk about some of the historical sites within the town, talk about the Planning Board members, current projects, and then open it up for questions. So town of Penfield, as of 2010, our last census, we had 36,242 residents within the town. I do reference this now. I'll come back to a couple of slides showing the progression of the growth of Penfield, and you know, where we've kind of had some booms, how we've leveled out, and discuss that. Tails just over 36 square miles, and over 130 miles of town roads. I know our plow trucks have been very busy trying to keep all of those clean and well-salted for everybody.
Are there very many county roads in there?
I pulled that information just off the highways website. They said 130 miles of town roads, so I don't know the exact, you know, we can look that up. But we do plow both county and state highways along with the town roads. We do get, you know, compensation back from them. I know they track per lane mile, how many miles they plow of county and state, so we do get money back for them, but you know, helping those agencies out, we do plow those at the same time. It only makes sense when you're crisscrossing to, you know, do the one down the middle at the same time. So a little bit about our departments. The town is broken up into many departments within the town. We have one town supervisor who was here with us today. He oversees it along with the town board. There are five town board members, including the supervisor that oversees our Assessor Engineering Library where we're hosted today, the Public Works Department, Planning, Recreation. So you can see there's quite a few departments that all fall into that, and we all work together. Each has their own job, or each has their own area of expertise, but all to keep the town running on a normal basis. Along with that, we do have many boards. A lot of these, some are voluntary, some are paid positions, but to incorporate, you know, residents into that, as I said, we have five town board members. We do have a seven-member Planning Board. I believe it's a five-member Zoning Board, Conservation Board, Historic Preservation, Parks and Rec, Library Board, and Cable and TV Advisory. We do also have many committees. We have Trails Committees. We have Energy and Environmental Advisory Committees. So there's a lot of opportunities for people, if they want to be involved in the town, to be involved, whether you want to join a committee or be on one of our boards. So just jumping back a little bit, before we get into the Planning Board, just wanted to show a little history. This is the White Mill. It was a flour mill. We talked about, Charlie talked about the, talking about the Flower City, F-L-U-R, or F-L-O-U-R, excuse me. This is down in what is now Channing Philbrook Park. You can see kind of the cliffs in the background as you're down in the park, the water flowing through from Rondacoyt Creek, but one of our early mills. This is actually the Float Bridge that is located now down on Empire Boulevard. You'd be down there with a canoe group next to McGregor's. I believe this view is looking towards Rondacoyt. You have the marina across the way. This, I thought, was an interesting picture that I just recently got that shows, I believe it's the Mann Owen House that is just south of the Four Corners. Kind of shows the contrast of why, how it looks today. I know Doug McCord is a landscape architect. His offices are in the back of this building right now, but it does show the historical part of it, you know, what it was back in the day. This is the Penfield Four Corners. Used to be Penfield Liquor Store, kind of looking on the southeast quadrant. Don't believe the little house structure is there anymore on the side of it, but the other buildings do remain today, and actually have recently been renovated. Lovretts Tavern. I always wondered what this building was, up on Penfield Road near Harris. Sits very close to the road. It's kind of fallen in disrepair, but I was happy to see a little slide on this just to know a little bit more about that building, and you know, why it's there, and you know, what the history is behind that. And then the Mud House. I was just talking with our historian Kathy Knower about this. She says on Wayland Road, was built in 1835. Still exists today. I believe it's one of two that we have in the town. They're actually mud house buildings. So jumping back to the Planning Board a little bit. The Planning Board was originally created in July 8th of 1929. The group was put together to help with the planning of the town, but there really wasn't a lot of development at that time, and our zoning was all one district. It was considered residential AA at the time, so it was all one piece. So there really wasn't a lot of need for the Planning Board. It really didn't have a lot of emphasis behind it. There was limited development, so it didn't really, you know, press the need for separate districts prior to that date. Then we started getting into the 1950s. 1950s, the town population was 4,851 people. As it started growing, I have a, you know, slide coming up that shows how it's, you know, growing up to that point, but we started to get into some shopping opportunities. The Four Corners started to develop. Eastway Plaza was one of the first plazas in the area, and then what was then called the Creek Croft Area. I believe in the 50s, they said it was a group of residents that won a contest to name that area as a Creek Croft, being Blossom Road, Creek Street, Brown Croft Area. And then, you know, obviously starting to see an increase in residential development after World War II. Just showing a sample as we go through, kind of showing different layouts. This is a Penfield Hills development, 1950s style, you know, smaller lots. We can see how that's kind of grown through the years, and then how we've actually started to kind of go backwards from that, from what we were before. Doug Fox gave me a couple of slides here. I thought we're kind of neat to see some of the, some of the older businesses that were in town. Ludwig Service Station, the Penfield Barber, Penfield Liquor Store, and then Stener Hardware from the 1950s. Hilltop Supermarket. I believe it's Hoisek Brothers Nurseries and Freeman's Farms.
We used to have an account there.
And Hoisek Brothers?
With Charlie. And once a month, we would pay him, but in the meantime, we-
Just ran a tab and-
Put it on our bill.
That's good. And then Eastway Plaza Stores from, you know, 1957, his sibling company, First Federal Savings and Loan, Noah's Ark Auto Accessories, Howard Johnson's Restaurant, Singer Sewing Machine Company, Eastway Restaurant, just one of those. Fanny Farmer Candy Shops, so kind of a little historical snippet of-
Looks like we had parking for 200 in town.
That was, my wife pointed that out too. She said, you know, at the time in the 50s, that there was only less than 5,000 people in the town, but we had parking for 2,500, so I guess that was the place to shop. Everybody could show up there. So I thought this was an interesting slide, and I actually need to expand it to include the 20, or excuse me, 2000 to 2010. But I think we think of development now as being so much more, but looking back, seeing 1960, 1969, there was 3,500 new home starts in that, in that time period, which is almost double what we've seen every year or every decade since then. I kind of found that striking, you know, obviously, I wasn't here in the 60s, but to see that that many home starts in that time period, and what the need for planning was, and as we get into the next slides, that's when 1962, the Planning Board, they changed the zoning districts, and made it, you know, much more emphasis on planning, master planning, and the need for it was driven by basically the tripling of the number of homes within Penfield in that, in that time period.
So if you go out 10 years, the next 10 years, what would your prediction be on the number of starts?
I think we've stayed pretty steady. Currently, right now, Penfield is the fastest-growing town in the county. We've been that for the last couple of years.
And where about Webster?
In the last, I believe, two years we have. Webster was in the early 2000s. Webster was the fastest-growing. They kind of dropped off with the housing recession. We've kind of stayed slow and steady throughout, so I'd be interested, and that's why I say I need to update this slide and take a look at that and see how we've dropped off, but I, you know, I thought it was very interesting to see the 60s, how much we jumped up. Here's the earlier slide that I was talking about that showed, you know, 1930s, you're at 3,300 residents, 1940s, 3,700, 1950s, 4,800 start increasing, then you see 1960, we triple the number of people in the town. We're starting to see the flight from the cities. People are coming out to the suburbs, want to move, you know, out to a suburb, you know, the American dream to, you know, own your own home, you know, have a property. It increases. Then you see again in the 1970s, we double again. So within that short period of time, we've gone from 4,800 people to 2,400 people, or almost six times, you know, in a 20-year period of time. So the need for planning really increased in the 60s, and that's why the zoning code changed and everything, you know, became updated. You know, then we go into, you know, the 80s, 90s, and then 2000s, you know, we start to measure out a little bit. So in 1960s, the zoning code was rewritten in 1962, gave the Planning Board more authority. The authority was given mostly because we separated the uses, the residential uses and the commercial uses were separated out. As I think in a future slide, it talks about the residential AA, which is now our current R-120, which is half-acre lots. One of the things to look at is Liberty Street is a good example of pre-1962 development. There's fourplexes on the street, there's duplexes, single-family residential, commercial. There's a little mix of everything on Liberty Street. If you go down there, that's, you know, it's not your typical subdivision street where you see all the same houses. You know, there is quite a variety on Liberty Street, and that was kind of an example of, you know, the pre-60s development, that just kind of anything went as, you know, if you could, you know, fit it in there, that worked. So as I said, the 60s got into more master planning, which also included getting infrastructure in place, the need for sanitary sewers, the need for public water, increases in road network, and then also the expansion of plazas. Panorama Plaza expanded, and then the continuation of needing residential neighborhoods to support the demand as people move out to the suburbs. And this map may be kind of hard to see from the back, but it is color-coded to kind of show how the town has grown in the dark purplish-blue. You can see the 1950s development. So you can see the 50s development around, you know, Baird Road, Four Corners down in here, 1960s, you can see along Panorama Trail, some of the areas along Embry. 1970s, you know, moving east towards the 250, 441 area. 1980s is out, this is Pembroke Development. South of that, Dublin Road is over here, Watson Road area. 90s, starting to spread out a little bit more, more towards the north end of town. And then the 2000s, you can see a lot of the development is to the north end of town. It's kind of followed areas of where the sewer's gone is where the development has gone. And I'll be showing you in a moment, showing you what the sewer layout plan is, and that's kind of what we're running up against now, is a lot of our development for the future is, how many, how much sewer capacity do we have left? It all kind of drains down to the main basin. You know, there is an interceptor sewer down in the Panorama Valley area, and then it takes it off to the county system. So as we keep stretching out further and further, we start to run out of, we call them sewer units, but you know, how many more homes can we, can we sewer on that? And that's kind of what we may be looking at in the future as we move ahead. So 1970s, we've had improved highway systems. Route 441 is enhanced, but that forever impacted the Four Corners. The Four Corners now is a four-lane highway going through there. It's not the same villagey setting it was anymore. It's becoming more of a highway system, more accelerated growth, and then also more demand for parks, need school infrastructures, also additional services. But there are development constraints, and we look at different things as we start to move out, different environmental items that we get into. We get into the creation of EPods in the 80s, more development in the 250, 441 area. I also found this interesting as we went through it, is there a period between 1976 and 1981 that the town board actually took away the approval of site plan and subdivisions from the Planning Board? That was a period, and I, from what I've heard, it was a political move. The town board became a Democratic town board. It was a Republican, mostly, Planning Board, so there was some conflict there for the town board. In that period of five years, actually took away the approval authority of the Planning Board. They became just a recommendation, recommendationary group to the town board, you know, in order to let them take control. Political parties switched back, and then that switched back to where we are now, where the Planning Board does have areas that, you know, they can do site plan and subdivision approval. One area during this time that was approved was the Pennicott subdivision. Thought this was an interesting picture, and again, it may be hard to see in the back. There's a roadway here, there's a plaza here, small building there, and there's some apartments back here, and then a road running this way. Anybody have any idea?
Is that 286?
No? Where this could be and what year it is?
It'd be the Fairport Nine Mile Point Road and the Penfield Road.
Here's Fairport Nine Mile Point Road. Here's, here's 441 here. This is Penfair Plaza.
Really?
Wagmans, and the Townhouse Development. This is 1973, and that's kind of what it looks like today. Not exactly the same shot, but you can see Penfair Plaza in the lower left of the screen. Now over here, we have First Niagara Bank, which actually just left. You have Wagmans, you have Target, you have the Townhouse Development over here, Doodle Bugs in the back, and then we will be talking about later, we do have some applications for more development up here. Joe Lou's Building that's under consideration for some redevelopment now also.
We used to call it Lloyd's Corner. The sign went down, but do we still call it Lloyd's Corner?
We do. We do still call it Lloyd's Corners. So 1970s, 1980s, we looked at more environmental planning. Things shifted from, you know, just kind of having, you know, square boxes across, moving into more cluster development design, more regulation from DEC, Department of Environmental Conservation. So with more environmental concerns, more development concerns, we kind of got into what we call a cluster development. So you can see, this is Tree Brook Drive here. This is Atlantic Avenue. You can see the pond in the front. We've expanded this in the last couple of years, but this has gotten a little bit larger, but kind of leaving open space areas, clustering homes into smaller lots, you know, having cul-de-sacs, but leaving green space areas in between rather than having developments that kind of fill those out altogether. So 1980s, 1981 was a, I guess, a benchmark year for the town. We had some issues with septic systems. Redwood and Cascade Drive developments were developments on half-acre lots that ultimately had all their septic systems fail. We had to have federal funding. I know it took a couple of years to kind of get them to come in here, redo those, get sewers to those, to get improvements for that. So they said, okay, we got to do something. This is, again, an issue we had with septic systems and the need for sanitary sewers. So in 1981, the town passed a change that changed all the lots were residential AA or R-120 or half-acre lots to out in the eastern Penfield is now one acre and two acre zoning. So this was done not for an open space thing, where everybody, you know, likes east Penfield to be open space now, and likes it to be more rural. They're one acre, two acre lots. This wasn't done for open space concerns. This was actually done for sanitary sewer capacity, and then not having sewers out there, the need for larger lots to, you know, we don't have septic system failures. Currently, the Monroe County Health Department will not, unless it's a pre-existing or certain instances, requires at least one acre of land to have a septic system on it today. So this is the map I talked about earlier. Again, it's kind of a gray shading area that shows the limits of where we have sanitary sewer development now. You can see the red line or the orange, brown lines from the back. That's the Water Authority Services. We do have water to every property in town, so there is public water available, but we do have limitations to the sanitary sewer. You can see the areas that have developed are the ones that have sewer in them. Out into east Penfield, that does currently is not sewered, and that's some of the reason why it continues to remain, remain more rural today. We talked about this. One thing that I think is a note is it was always anticipated that when sewers were extended to the east, that the zoning would revert back to a higher density. I think that's one thing that's going to be interesting, that's one thing why we didn't get sued back then, was that we said, okay, you're going to go to one acre and two acre development now. Once sewers become available, then, you know, we can lower your density back down. I think that's going to be an interesting thing. As sewers become available, you know, I know, you know, there are more concerns about suburbanism continuing to creep east. That's why we are looking at different types of development, as I'll talk about in a few minutes, mixed-use developments, other areas that we can make things more sustainable, fit, you know, more housing in, do something that's, you know, more acceptable than continuing the suburban sprawl that we've been seeing. So 1990s, this is when the markets were doing good. Everybody wanted, you know, large houses on large lots. Everybody wanted at least a half an acre, an acre lot. The bigger the house, the bigger the lot, you know, seemed to be better in that period of time. Then in 2000, we started, this was after the market kind of dropped, we see people didn't want to own large lots as much anymore. People didn't want to spend all day on Saturday mowing the lawn. They wanted townhouses. We've seen, you know, an increase in the need for senior housing. Penfield is the fastest aging community in Monroe County. Rondacoyt is an older neighborhood in general, but we do see a demand for patio homes and townhomes and other things that, you know, people can go in, you know, have a nice place, live there, but then, you know, go south in the wintertime, shut the door, leave, let somebody else worry about mowing the lawn, or let somebody else worry about, you know, plowing the driveway in the wintertime. This is a shot, just showing some patio homes, you know, similar style, all one floor, being, you know, taken out the stairs or, you know, one-floor development, but, you know, does have yards with it. Some of the other development we saw, these are just some highlights, Strong Medical Campus. This is on Fairport Nine Mile Point Road, also known as, we call it Platinum Office Park. This was recently developed or redeveloped in the back to add a second building to that campus. And then the Baytown upgrades. This is a project that's had, you know, many different stages to it. Originally came to the Planning Board several years ago in mid-2000s. Came in for upgrades to facade. They want to do some improvements. Talked about what to do with the tops had left. So they've talked about taking out the middle of tops, cutting a hole in it, and making it a street of shops. That has been approved by the Planning Board for many years. The DeMarco Group, which owns the development, has actually been waiting to see how the rezoning would go. I'd say referred to the map in the back, and we can take a look at that more, and I have a slide here. It went to the Planning Board initially. The application was made to rezone an area in the back to expand, put a new Super Walmart in up at Baytown. The Planning Department or Planning Board handled the environmental assessment of that, looking at the impacts to the neighbors for noise, lights, additional traffic on Empire Boulevard and Bay Road, Creek Street, and worked with the developer to come up with, you know, a solution to that. They completed that, recently had gone to the town board, and as of this fall, after extensive discussions with the town board, many iterations with the developer, back and forth to find the right fit, you know, balancing the residents' concern versus, you know, the developer's wants, I think came up with a good compromise. So the town board recently rezoned a portion of this area to accommodate further expansion. So we are still waiting to see what they're going to finally bring in. They're going to be coming in with a site plan to the Planning Board shortly, so that'll be one of the things that's on their agenda, is to look at how that lays out, what buildings go in there, what, you know, new restaurants, you know, how that all comes together. But that's been a project that's been in the works for a long, long, long time. So back to the Planning Board again. Our Planning Board is a seven-member board. We have 20 meetings a year. We meet twice a month, except for July and August in the summer, and then in the holidays, and Thanksgiving and Christmas time. Typically, we have three applications on the agenda at all times, and then we send out the board materials on Fridays. We send them their information so that they are all residents of the town. We send them their information so they know what's going on, what projects are coming up, and then we provide them with information so that, you know, they can make the best decision that they can. Some of the requirements to be on the Planning Board. You need to be a resident of the town of Penfield. You need to have desire to participate in government, be part of your community, you know, help decide, you know, what goes on. You need to have a lot of time to, you know, to devote to the meetings. We do meet twice a month, but there is a lot of homework ahead of that. All the members, you know, do get, you know, weekly drops from us, more information to look at, more stuff to read. It is an appointed position, so all board members, you know, do go through interview process with the town board. And then they also need the ability to kind of weigh the options or weigh the input from developers and the neighbors. A lot of people come in with a lot of emotion on both ends of it. The Planning Board needs to kind of weigh that emotion, cut down to the facts, and then find out or come up with, again, a compromise of what would be the best for the town of Penfield as a whole. No matter where you put a new development, whether it's housing, commercial, whatever, it's next to somebody's house, it's in somebody's backyard, so there's always going to be somebody that's, you know, not thrilled with it, not happy with it, but, you know, it's the Planning Board's job is to kind of work through that, work through the emotion, and come up with a, you know, a solution that, you know, be best for everybody. And then as of recently, all Planning Board members need to be able to use a computer and email. Planning Board members, they also review our current projects based on our zoning code. I didn't bring our code with us today. That's one thing we're working on updating, but all their decisions need to be based on what our laws are. You know, get into some of the misconceptions in a little bit, but they need to base their decisions on what the zoning code is, and that's established by the town board. The Planning Board handles all site plan and subdivision projects except for three areas. The town board retains control today over the Four Corners area, La Salle's Landing, and what was also called incentive zoning. We've done a couple of incentive zoning projects where the developer comes in and has a piece of property and says, I'd like to do something more. I'd like to do, you know, something additional with this property. You know, how can we make that happen? So the town board says, well, if you can enhance a local park, if you can do some road improvements, if you can do some sewer upgrades, some things that would help the town as a whole, we can, you know, look at giving you some additional units. It originally started with a sewer pump station, rather than having a pump station that just handled a singular development. The town said, we'd like to see a regional pump station that'll handle more homes than this. So the developer put in the regional pump station, which was an increased cost, and then was given some additional number of units in his development to kind of offset that cost to, you know, make him whole with that. So the Planning Board process, typically applicants come in, it's typically a two-step process. You have a sketch plan, and then you have a preliminary, final application that you work through. The public hearings are in place to give the public an opportunity to come in, the residents, the neighbors, an opportunity to share their opinion, whether they're for it or against it. We do put things in the Penfield Post, that is our legal paper where we have all our notices. We do put sign placards on the properties, so if you drive by and says, you know, this property is under review by the town of Penfield, there's a sign out there. We do mail postcards within a certain distance. Usually it's within 500 feet of a property. So if you're located within 500 feet of a property, and there's a change on that property, we'll send you a postcard saying, you know, by the way, this is coming up before the board on, you know, whatever date. You can go to our website, you can call us at the town if you have any concerns. And then we also post our new projects on the town website. Some of the misconceptions about the Planning Board is, a lot of times, people will come in and say, well, we got our whole neighborhood here to come in and say, we don't want this project, so therefore, you know, make it go away. Or we've gotten a petition together and it has 50 names. How many names do we need on our petition before, you know, this project will disappear? How many names do we need on our petition before this project will disappear? Fortunately, unfortunately, the planning board doesn't work that way. They're tied by what our town code is. If you come in for a development and you're a developer or even a homeowner, and you own a piece of property and say, I want to put another house next to mine, and it meets our zoning code, the town has to entertain it. I mean, that takes out the, we don't like this person, we don't like that person, we don't like the color of your shirt, therefore, we're not going to accept your application. It levels the playing field that everybody, if you meet our code, you meet the rules and regulations set aside by the town, you have the right to develop. Yes, you need to look at how you're going to buffer your neighbors. You need to look at traffic. You need to look at environmental concerns, so there's other pieces to the puzzle, but it does set up that there are rules in place that need to be followed. So it's not, if you have 101 residences sign a petition, that this project will go away. It's how do we best make this project work for everybody? Just going through some of the regulations and some of the reference materials. The planning board needs to follow what is SECA procedures. Those are State Environmental Quality Review Act procedures set up by the state government. Different environmental things that they need to follow through. There's also applications are all sent to the county. Monroe County takes a look at them, makes sure things are consistent. They look at projections of how things are going to develop in different towns around the area, just so they can kind of have a hand in how development happens. They do send us comments back and some feedback on that. And it's not uncommon for things to go to litigation. The town did get sued on the East Side YMCA for, the planning board made a determination that that fit within a residential area. Some people didn't think it did, so we did get sued on that. We did win, but we did get sued. We've also gotten sued on Ellison Heights and Linden Hills. We've actually been sued on Ellison Heights twice now. The second go-around, we got sued. The first time was Article 278, saying that you can cluster was going up. It was originally approved for two, seven, eight-story towers. That held up in state court. And then now we're coming back for the second phase of it, and we're going through that again.
Can I ask a question about Ellison Heights? Because when I see that lawsuit book, it scares the hell out of me. And I don't know how much it's going to cost me as a taxpayer to defend whatever needs to be defended. But do we, as a town, assume all the legal aspects on our side?
Yes, we do. I mean, that's the part of having boards out there, but I mean, it's not, as people bring applications to us, we go at them as we do any project. I mean, you just try to make it the best project that you can. You move forward with it as you can. We can't predict when people are going to sue and why, but...
Why can't we just go to the owner or developer?
Well, they're paying for it twice. They're a taxpayer in town. They're paying for it on their taxes, and they're paying for it on their end. But I mean, that's the society we live in. You have the right to sue if you want. We try not to spend more money on these things than we have to. We don't go out of our way to get into suits, but they do happen from time to time. And then, as with Ellison Heights, we often have times where, interesting that people in the first phase of the development don't want a second phase of the development. We had that with Allen's Creek Valley. Section 2 was built. They didn't want to see Section 4 built because that would impact their view looking down the hillside, so they had issue with that. And then back to Ellison Heights, Phase 1 was built. Now they don't want to see Phase 2 being built. So. More of the regulations. The planning department, which I'm in, I'm not on the planning board. I have no vote on the planning board. I just act as, in the planning department, to give them what information that they need, collect the information. Our job is to transfer information from the developer to the board, collect the information from the public. Our job is just to filter information back and forth, make sure that everybody's informed as they need to be. Our board is a seven-member board. It can be five members or seven members by state law, but Penfield happens to have a seven-member board. They are required to get four hours of training every year. Our board members seem to get well above and beyond that. All of them we have now are professionals in their fields. And we also need to have a four-member quorum in order to have a meeting and be able to make decisions. We need to have a majority of the board there to do that. Again, this is probably very hard to see in the back, but this is kind of what I referred to earlier, showing the, what is, most of the beige area is R120, half-acre lot or smaller subdivisions, some areas of commercialism. We have the Bay Empire Creek area. You have the Four Corners Panorama area, and then the 250, 441. The brownish area is the area that is currently zoned one acre. So you can see it's kind of a buffer from half-acre development. You have the one-acre development, and then the purple area is RA2 or two-acre development. So you can see as we're kind of slowly moving east, as sewers become available, this is the areas that were changed back in the 80s. Some of the things that the board needs to take into consideration when they're looking at the projects are steep slopes. We do have, and woodlands, areas highlighted in brown or show the woodland areas in town. In the 80s, we did create five EPods, or Environmental Protection Overlay Districts, for the boards to look at and take into consideration when you're developing, to make sure that the environment is being considered in a development. We're not just clearing everything, paving over it, impacting the plants and animals, that we take the water courses into consideration. You can see in blue are the different water courses, the creeks. Four Mile Creek, Hip Brook is over here. Ronacoyt Creek Tributaries down this way. And then you can see the steep slope areas are mostly around the Bay area as you get down into Empire Boulevard and then along Panorama Trail. We have a lot of steep slopes that also need to be considered. You also have water courses in wetlands. You have Commission Ditch. You can see a lot of that is floodplain area, the Thousand Acre Swamp in the middle of town, and then again, the Ronacoyt Creek area. There are additional concerns that the planning board needs to take into consideration before they make a decision. And of course, we do have floodplains. This is a picture of Panorama Plaza. You can see the traffic light out in the front, but we have had several times that we've had cars underwater in that parking lot. Knock on wood, the building is up high enough that it hasn't gone into tops, but the parking lot in the back floods, the parking lot in the front has flooded. We've tried to make some improvements to that. We've changed out the bridge over by the Brookhill Apartments. We've had some flooding over by Brookhill time to time, but these are things that the board needs to take into consideration, so these type of things don't happen. We do have seven members on our board. Arson Marcarian is our chairman. He is currently retired, but was a former mayor of Messina, New York. Bill Bastian is an engineer. He worked at ITT, I believe now it's called Axelis. Jim Burton is an engineer at TY Lin. A.J. Hetzke is an independent lighting consultant, owns his own lighting business. Sue Kreiser, she and her husband own their own construction firm. Doug McCord is a licensed landscape architect. We showed his building before, it was the Man Owen House, where his business is in the back of that. And Terry Titens is a police officer with the Rochester City Police Department.
Are these members paid?
They do get a small stipend. I don't know exactly the amount is, but it's not a lot, but they do get a small stipend as part of serving on the planning board. Some boards are paid, some are not. The town board is paid. They get paid a little bit more. The planning board is paid. The conservation board is not. Most of the other boards are not, but the planning board does get a small stipend. As I talked earlier, we have moved forward in the electronic age to get rid of a lot of the paper to be more environmental. Katie Evans in the planning department spearheaded this movement a couple of years ago, was to move to using laptops. All of our planning board members use laptops. We transfer a lot of information back and forth, either through email, put things on our website, just to reduce the amount of paper that we use, and also to reduce the amount of information that people need to bring to meetings. Remember, when I first started, people would bring milk crates full of paper at every meeting. They'd have stacks of papers, bring them in, put them on the table. Oh, jeez, I forgot that one. Or where's this piece of information? And we'd be bringing paper down. At the end of the meeting, once a project was approved, everybody would throw their papers on the middle of the table, and then we'd recycle all those. And then we'd, the next one, we require 22 sets of plans. I mean, there'd be like 30 sets of thick documents that engineers had to submit. And I remember being on the other end of that, and you're spending a whole day running off documents to somebody. They'd go to a meeting and prove it, and then just throw it on the middle of the table. It is recycled, but seems a lot of waste of paper. So we have moved towards more in the electronic age. We do color-code our flash drives, so we send them to each board member. Each board member has their own color, so we can kind of keep track of who has what and who's received their drops. We also send stuff in the mail. They get just a little packet, has their flash drive drop in there, and a lot of them still like to see the plans to spread out on the table. I still like to have a couple of sheets. We usually send them the site plan and the grading plan, so that if they're out in the field, they're going to look at a project site. They have something in their hand to hold. Go look at a site, see what impact it is. So it's much thinner than what it used to be. Here's a look at one of our planning board meetings. You can see the board members. This is a work session in the back of the room. Board members sit around the table. They'll have their laptops out. We project, as we're doing here, putting it up on the screen, debate it around the table, have the discussion amongst the board members. There's our planning board attorney on the back of the picture there. Some of the information that comes in for each one. We get permission letters, their letter of intent, environmental assessment forms, EAF, engineering report. We're down to 10 sets of papers. Six of those go to the county, so we only actually take four now. We used to be much more than that. Then the seven copies are for the board members themselves, just to have a copy of the initial paper, and then everything else we require to be electronic. It helps us. We can look it up at a meeting. We have a document from day one of a project to the last day it's approved and beyond, and it also captures it so we can keep it historically and search it so the next project comes up. It's easy to search back up, but all the information is stored on the town databases. This shows the project binders. This is for Baytown Plaza. This is what we've amassed so far, and this was actually from the fall. So you can see all that information is on the one flash drive, but this is the amount of information, if truly you brought all that to the meeting just to talk about one project. Baytown Plaza being an extreme situation of it, but you can just see, it's kind of a telling picture to see how much documentation was submitted for one project. Try to minimize that downward. Now we can just put it on a flash drive, and you have all the information right in your hand or right available to you. There's some more pictures showing the discussion amongst the board. There's me at the end of the table talking. Board members are required to go look at every project site, so they're familiar with the site ahead of time, so they can ask questions, they can walk the property. So you'll often see them out there walking around ahead of time, looking at the sites. We'll have a sketch plan. They'll go back out and look at it again, and people will bring up things you don't know about. I mean, none of us are experts about things that aren't in our backyard. So oftentimes, you get input from the public that if it's your backyard, you know more about it, and you've lived there longer than we have. So you share a lot of information and explain to us about the creek overflows in the spring and different things to look for, that then the board goes back out and looks at it again and has a fresh look at it. And that's why we do have the public hearings and have the meetings, to get the information from the people that live there. They know the best. I mean, it's your yard, it's your neighborhood. You know best what's going on, and to share that with the board. We don't leave the planning board hanging out there on their own. As I said, they're not all experts in development. They're not, it's a cross-section of Penfield. I mean, any resident can be on the planning board. You do need to go through an interview process, but they're not all experts in development. They're not all experts in planning. So we have what's called the Project Review Committee, or PRC. This is our technical staff that brings together most of our departments throughout the town. Every Wednesday morning, we sit down with the engineering department, planning, building, zoning, fire marshal, highway department. We throw the plans, it used to be on the table, we put them up on the screen, and talk about them. That's where our technical staff and expertise comes from. That's what your tax dollars go towards, is paying for the staff members to be there that have expertise. We do have people, Jeff Benway's a professional engineer. We do have people that are zoning trained. That's what they're there for, is to provide that technical expertise to the planning board and to the town board. The town board is not all experts in this either. It's our job as staff is to provide them with the information, both from the developer, our comments, our concerns, along with the information and the questions, concerns from the public, that they can make the best decision that they can make. So they're well-informed, they have as much information in front of them, so that they're making the best educated decision that they can. Going to go through some of the current projects. I put TB as town board, PB, planning board. Baytown is a joint, as we talked about. Ellison Heights, that is a residential development, and I have pictures of that. Abington Development is getting into Phase 2 and 3, it's a development up on Route 250. Phase 1 is completed. It's 250 across from Marchner Road is the Rudy Neufeld Development. Sparrow Point is a new subdivision that's coming in on Baird Road. If you're between Baird, between Browncroft and Wayland Road, on the west side of the road, it's kind of been muddy in that area, they've been bringing in some dirt, but that's a new development over there. We do have a proposed new Tim Hortons that is coming in on Penfield Road, and I'll show that. Jeremiah's is a new town board application, new restaurant coming in near Doodle Bugs across from Target. The Bayview YMCA is looking to do some improvements on their property. And then 2000 Empire is looking to expand their medical campus on their piece, and I think I have pictures of most all of those. So this may be harder to see. We do have a board in the back. This is current Baytown Plaza. This is the Walmart. Out here is Empire Boulevard. Here's Creek Street. Going up this way is Bay Road. Here's the existing Tops Building. McDonald's is here in the front. This used to be Blockbuster. Blockbuster isn't there anymore. So if you're not aware of the site, this is Uncle Bob's Storage here, but existing Walmart is here. This screen is a little dated, but they're looking to put new Super Walmart back here, take the middle of Tops out, create a street of shops with some outbuildings, new restaurants, and then new restaurants down in here within that development. So they've been changing the facades. These are some of the changes they've shown, and then you can see, this is what was proposed, and you can see they've already sort of changed in it. This is DeBella's on the corner. There's a new, I believe it's Premier Fitness is in that plaza. So they've done some upgrades to the plaza, but they're looking to do a lot more with actually carving a hole in the middle of Tops and creating a little street of shops with some more boutiquey stores in the middle of that area. This is the 2000 Empire Boulevard property I've talked about. There isn't an existing doctor's office in there now. It's kind of hard to see in that picture up above, but they're looking to do some facade changes to the existing building, and then also add on an imaging center on it. And then this is Empire State Weekly's. Anybody know that building that's next door? They are currently moving them out of that, and they're looking to make this into a dialysis building or dialysis center into that. So they're moving Empire State Weekly's back to Webster where they started, and then looking to make this a dialysis center to actually make a medical campus here. So they're bringing imaging into the building at 2000 Empire, and then 2010 Empire will become a dialysis center. The Shaw Office Building, this is the White House that sits kind of at the top of the hill. Wegmans 250, 441 is over here. So as you're going to the top of the hill, the Shaw property, there's an existing tax business in there now, and I believe there's a dentist office in there. They've come in to expand that and add another building. His son, Niraj, is also a CPA and a tax accountant, so he was looking to come in with his building. So we may see some changes there shortly. Tim Hortons, we talked about. Tim Hortons is looking to go into the Lew Engineering Building, next to East Side Urgent Care. If you're on Penfield Road, East Side Urgent Care, Aldi's. Right next to that is kind of an older, you know, blue-gray building, which was the Lew Engineering. They're looking to take that down and put a new Tim Hortons in there. Ellison Heights, Phase 2. This was the one that was originally approved as a seven, eight-story building. There was two towers located in this area. This is Penfield Road. This is old Penfield Road. This is Dolomites Property over here. The Genesee Conservation League, the gun club is down here. Tops Plaza is over here, Brookhill Apartments. So as you come up the hill, you can kind of see their emergency access. You can see some of the townhomes on the end. But Phase 1 was built. This is the Ellison Heights HOA, Homeowners Association, on Sable Oaks Drive comes off. That was built in Phase 1. The developers come back and basically said he didn't want to build two eight-story towers anymore. He didn't think that that was really keeping with Penfield. So he's asking to build five four-story buildings, looking more like this down in here with a clubhouse and a pool. And then having five buildings all have underground parking, so you'd pull under the building, you'd have at least one space underground out of the weather, and then elevators up into the building. This is the one that's gone to lawsuit. There's 14 neighbors up here at the top that don't like what is proposed in Phase 2, so they are currently suing the town over that one.[1713.01] are currently suing the town over that one.
Question about that.
Yes?
Yeah, the Genesee Conservation League, who you guys have, they're a great factory. Isn't that sound going to interfere with some of those homes?
I mean, the Conservation League, I believe has been there since the 20s or 30s. So, I mean, they've pre-existed all development around it. Everybody knows they're there when they get there. Unfortunately, people have concern, once they move in, that the gun club is still there. But it's always an ongoing thing for us. We always remind developers when they come in and say, you know, there's a gun club there, you know, there's things going on. Oh, nope, we're good, we're fine. Our demographic research says no problem. So...
It's not very nice to understand, you know.
I'm sure it can, I'm sure it can be pretty noisy, but we try to, you know, inform people before they come in, but, you know, we can't tell them where not to live. But, you know, unfortunately, you know, then they have concerns after it's built. Bayview YMCA. A lot of you are, I'm sure, aware that they had a fire last year, just about this time last year. They had a climbing tower, rock climbing tower for the kids at the camp to go, they can climb up and down. There was some arson up there. The tower was burned down, so they are looking at replacing that now. They're trying to make it bigger and better. So there is now a climbing tower, and then they've added a dual zip line area with stairs, so, you know, you can race your buddy down the zip lines on it. They're also looking to make this handicap accessible, that they'll have hoist that handicapped children or people can also zip line with it. So... This was actually just approved by the planning board at the last meeting?
Approved?
Just last Thursday.
Okay.
Yep. So it's just recent, was just approved by them. There's some low rock climbing areas, you know, for smaller children that they can, you know, traverse back and forth.
That's going to be a tower.
Seems like it'll be, you know, be something fun. Next is Vision Dodge. This is if you're going up Panorama Trail, heading towards East Rochester, across from Paychecks. They're looking to do a new facade update on this. Now it's Dodge Chrysler Jeep and Dodge Ram, so they're looking to brand all four of their groups together in one building. Add a new showroom area under the Vision title, and then, you know, do some updates to the facade on the front of that project. Then two other areas we're looking to do something different is what we're creating is called a mixed-use area. And I have boards on the back that show the area more defined. Again, this is Fairport Nine Mile Point Road. This is 286 Atlantic Avenue. Here's the Town Hall Complex, Suites Corners Road. This is Penfield Center Road up here. Is a lot of this area is currently rural, a lot of it's open, and a lot of it is for sale right now. So we're looking to do something different with that than just, right now it's zoned, one acre zoning, one and two acre zoning, rather than building large lots. Right now there's not a demand for people to live on large lots, is to do something a little bit different and create a bit of a neighborhood. You can have some, being two-state highways, it's going to develop into something. There's already Don Scott's gas station and an empty gas station on the opposite corner. Have some potential for commercial development on the corner, but have that as part of the community itself. So create a development that, you know, may have townhouses, it may have senior living, it may have patio homes with single-family, all kind of mixed together in a more of a neighborhood, more like, kind of like the Four Corners. Create a neighborhood feel, put in bike paths, put in sidewalks, make it very walkable. Try to get away from the dependence on an automobile. I mean, most of us now have to drive to Wegmans to get a gallon of milk, or drive to, you know, Baytown Plaza to go to Walmart, or go to another store, is to have more smaller shops, kind of like the Four Corners, that, you know, you can walk to, maybe you can walk and get an ice cream, or you can get a cup of coffee, or, you know, be on a bike, take a bike path, you know, from your neighborhood up above and then, you know, bike down to the YMCA. So we're looking to do things to make things more walkable, more active design, that, you know, people will park their car, get out, walk a little bit, be healthier and more active, and also, you know, interact with their neighbors a little bit more.
Is that Harris though, out there?
Uh...
Off 250, you see 250?
Yep, 250 is right here.
And where is Harris Hill?
This is Suites Corners Road here.
Oh, okay.
This is, yeah, this is Dublin Road here.
Okay.
This is Eden Field. This is the YMCA, East Side YMCA, Wickham Farms, and then Grossman's.
No, it's just...
Just a little bit off, yeah, just a little bit off the...
Mark?
Yes?
Before you get off with the slide...
Yep.
Can I just slow you down a second?
Sure.
Or not slow you down a second. From a planning standpoint, or your standpoint, or your department's standpoint, to me this sounds like a kind of unique opportunity that you have, we have...
Yep.
...to do this. So could you just kind of...
Give a little more on it?
Yeah.
Sure. It is a very unique opportunity. It's something we actually have gotten funding from the Genesee Transportation Council. We've got $25,000 from GTC to study it. GTC is a transportation business. I mean, that's their job, is to get people down the highways. So for them to invest money into planning, to make things, not use the highways as much, to encourage people to go biking, encourage people to go walking, is very unique. It's the first of its kind that they've done this. We're also looking to do it with Manitow Lake, and that's the next slide I have up. But, you know, encourage, you know, to have buses or other things there to get people away from, you know, being so auto-oriented. But we're looking at development that it's not sustainable the way we're going. To build, you know, the tax money you generate off of property on a one-acre development, yes, it's a big house or whatever, but you need to be upwards of $300,000 or more in order to offset the cost of having two kids in school, the infrastructure and the roadways, having the road plowed, having water. You know, the developer puts it in, but for the town to maintain it over time, it ends up actually being tax-negative. So building more single-family houses in town actually is eroding away our tax base. We're looking to do something that's more tax-positive. Retail is tax-positive, other things that, you know, townhouses, senior living, other things like that are more tax-positive things that, you know, are contributing, you know, to the town tax base. So...
One of the things that I could just throw in, said, one of the things that Trail Committee has always tried to do, or they did it maybe a little strong a few years ago, was to, when a new, when a developer came in, to have easements or rights away and so forth. And I don't know how many projects in the last couple of years have, there's been a push...
We've encouraged that, yes.
But is that, have we, I know we got one project...
Timber Glen has some, Timber Glen has some trails in it.
Are there any others that have happened?
We have required some trails in. I know the Arena Development was off of Penfield Center Road that had some trail requirements in it. Timber Glen has trail requirements in it. We do have stuff on the back of Newberry Park. There's connectivity in there. Oak Ridge Knolls, which is off of Atlantic Avenue. We do have a trail connection there that can get you from Rothfuss Park through a corner behind Oak Ridge Knolls, and then onto the town sidewalks, and then over towards the Town Hall Park. So we've encouraged that. But that would be a trade-off of here, is to allow some increase in density, which would help the developer. But as a requirement of that, we would say, you have to put in trails, not just get an easement. You're putting in an eight-foot-wide, you know, biking, hiking trail along the side. You're putting in, you know, additional sidewalks. You need to put in, you know, other infrastructure for that, you know, more green open areas. So you can have some increased density here, but this you need to make an open ballfield area, you know, create more parks. You need to have, you know, a common area for residents to sit outside and, you know, utilize picnic tables or something else. So, you know, that's what, you know, you may give, you know, additional density to a, you know, developer on one end, but you're going to have requirements that he needs to meet on the other end. And that's the part of the, setting up the mixed-use district, is to set outside the framework. We're not going to tell them what to build, but, you know, as in all of our districts, give them the framework. As if you want to come in and build in our area, this is what you're, this is the rules that you're going to have to follow.
Yeah, Mark, before you turn that, don't you have a gun club right in the middle there?
We do. We do. We have another gun club that's, we have, the other gun club is right here. So here's the Town Hall Complex. We have all our ballfields. We do have another gun club here. So that's another consideration if they do this, is how do we fit that in? We have had a developer come in and say, you know, I'm going to put in senior housing right up along this line. And we said, well, there's a gun club. Well, we've done a market study and there's not a concern. We said, well, shouldn't you put up a sound wall or do something? No, we think we're good. Okay, those people are fine until they move in and then realize, again, there's a gun club next door, and, you know, it wasn't as loud as they thought, or it wasn't as impactful as they thought, and...
Don't they warn people? I mean, the people who build these?
Well, they, we warn the people that build these, but they still think they can sell them, so they come in, they'll sell them, and once they sell them, they're out. So...
See, I have bought around...
They don't live with it anymore.
I don't like that.
Yeah, I mean, it's noisy, and we do warn them, and that's why we're looking to do something. And looking at, you know, that's going to be an important part of when we study this here. What do you put over there? You know, how do you buffer that? What else do you put there? I mean, they're not going anywhere, so, you know, how do you work with them? And we have, one of their members is going to be on our mixed-use committee, so they have a voice in the room too. I mean, they're, they're here, they pay taxes as other people do. You know, they run a legal business, you know, but they need to, you know, be incorporated into, you know, the developments, and how do you work with that? And then Manitow Lake is the other area. We're looking at a mixed-use district. Coming back, looking at the lower picture, this being Tops Plaza, Panorama Trail. This is Blossom Road down into Ellison Park. And then this is Penfield Road here. This is the Ellison Heights development we talked about. There's a 60-plus acre lake that's been left behind through the development, or them taking out sand over number of years. This was the concrete plant for Dolomite. They used that, and they would suck the sand out of the lake area, kept enlarging it. Now we're left with a beautiful 60-acre lake. They're looking to sell it. Well, they're looking to sell it for millions of dollars, and right now it's zoned R-120, so it's basically zoned for residential homes. So if they're looking to sell it for $4 million, you need to put in some very expensive homes. And we don't think that's the very best use of it. I mean, to have five people that live on this beautiful lake all by themselves with, all having a couple million-dollar homes, we think it should have, you know, public access to it, have hiking trails around it, have public access to the lake. So again, we're looking at, this is a mixed-use area that, you know, could you possibly put a, you know, a day spa down there? Could you put some, you know, small restaurants? Could you put some other infrastructure in there that may be better? But then also have availability to the residents, you know, of the town, that you can go down there and, you know, canoe on it, or kayak, or you could walk around it, rather than having this being, you know, five to 10 single-family houses, you know, Millionaire's Row, that they own, you know, this lake, and it's not open to the rest of the public. So that's why we're looking to...
From a tiny standpoint on these two projects, what, what do you see? What's, what is your department going to be doing soon, and when is the public going to be tied into this?
Yep. We had a kickoff meeting. We've set up two, actually, three committees. We have a core committee and then two subcommittees, one for each area. We had that meeting amongst the core committee, just with staff, on January 22nd, so just last week. We are having a meeting with the consultant we hired. Sand County Studios is the consultant that the town hired to do this project. They're coming in this next week, February 5th, and we're going to meet with them. And once we get this going, then we'll have a big public hearing. We'll open it up to the town. All the residents come in and comment, what would you like to see, what wouldn't you like to see? But then working with these committees, we do have residents or people that live all around both of these neighborhoods to get their input. We have representatives from the Ellens Creek Valley. We have representative from Ellison Heights, representative from Panorama Trail. We have Monroe County Parks representative for mixed-use, or, excuse me, for Manitow Lake. So we've tried to get a cross-section of people from all these different neighborhoods on this committee as we move forward to set this up. And thankfully, the town board is, has committed to hold off on these areas until we get these studies done. We do have a developer that, right now, is looking and has an application that he was looking to bring in to the town on 254, or, excuse me, yeah, 250 and 286 Browncroft on the northwest corner, the Tynings Craft Property, right next to the gun club. We had a developer that wanted to come in and go ahead with that, and the town board said, you know, no, we're waiting until the studies are done. We want to make sure we do this right. There is such an expansive area. There's over 325 acres of land that is currently farmland. Let's plan this out, let's do this right. You know, the town of Penfield has a great record of doing planning studies. We have a 250 corridor study. We have a land use access management plan. We have the comprehensive plan. We've planned out all many other areas. Let's not, you know, take this area and just let one developer, you know, build a, something heavily dense on one area, and either one use up all the sewer units, or end up with a lopsided development. So the town board has basically put their foot down and said, no, we're going to wait until these studies are done. Let's come up with the best plan that we can, and then, you know, see how they fit in with that. That's most of the stuff I had for the planning board part of it. I do have a few more pictures after this, if people have questions now. I did mix in a couple of town board applications, just other current projects that are coming up, but if people have questions, I'd be glad to answer their questions. I've left my card on the back table. I also have my card up here. There are display items, you know, you're welcome to look at. My card has my email address, phone number, you know, if you have questions that you think of after this, you know, please let me know. If you have any other questions, I can show, I just have a couple more slides, or Dick, if you have something.
Well, I'll let everybody else go first, but I do have one comment and four questions.
And you were the one that promised me at the beginning of the session, you weren't going to ask any questions.
A comment is, is an ex-expert on sidewalks. I was surprised and disappointed that you didn't show us how many miles of sidewalk.
I should have, I should have thrown in there. I was the, I was the former town sidewalk coordinator, but, yes, I should have, I should have put us, I think we're up over 100 miles of sidewalk.
Yeah. Because I hear people, when they move in, or come into town, they visit, they say, where'd you get all the sidewalks from?
I believe we're at 60 miles of sidewalk, excuse me.
So I get comments like that.
And that's a requirement also of, as we've moved into planning, every new development is required to put sidewalks in. That's good and bad. I mean, we do end up with the comments, well, you know, we always laugh that, you know, we have sidewalks that go nowhere. Developer puts them in from his property line to property line, which we require, but then they're not interconnected. So, I mean, we do end up with gaps in town. It's a good start. You know, the town, we have allocated our money, and every year we, you know, we try to fill in another gap. This year we were up on Empire Boulevard. We were trying to do on near Rossman Drive. We have new Abraham Lincoln Park. We made some connections down to there, up by the apartment. So every year we kind of do a little piece around. We've been working on Panorama since I've started here, slowly leapfrogging our way up the road. Glad to see the Panorama, you know, was at least done all on one side up the road. So having developers put it in is good. I mean, it gets it started. They're required to do their frontage, and then at least some portion internally. And then, you know, our job as the town is to kind of fill in those gaps.
So the four, the four top secret questions are, ready?
Yep.
The first one is, the Parks people, recreation, have a five-year plan, master plan they're working on. You get asked, your department get asked to be on, interface with those people?
They did ask for some, some interaction. I've asked for a copy of what, what they've been working on, a draft copy before it goes out, just to make sure that, you know, as we work through the mixed-use studies, as we work, right now we're working on the open space update, just to make sure that our plans kind of agree together. And, you know, we have communicated back and forth. I haven't served directly in the committee, but I have had some interaction with them.
Would there be something on the open space?
We're working on the open space.
Public...
Yep. We're going to have a public hearing on that also. We've gone out and looked at all the different properties. We've assessed them as a committee. We're working on the draft. Right now, we'll give that back to the committee, have them look at it, have the town board have a consideration of it, and then we'll open that up to the public. And again, have a public hearing that the, give the residents an opportunity.
Same question for the school board of Penfield and the school board of Webster. Do you ever get pulled in by those people to interface with some of their plans?
We don't often get asked by them to be involved. We try to include them in our staff. I know we do have a new superintendent of Penfield. I don't know the new superintendent. I know Tony has reached out to him to be involved with him a little bit more. We were a little more involved with Carlavati, but there are safe route-to-school programs. There are some other interactions. We try to keep an open discussion with the school district, you know, just so we are coordinating together.
The last question is, the east side, the new east side water plants that are being worked on, will that have any impact on East Penfield or any part of Penfield?
Um, not, not currently. Yeah, sewers is most of the...
Does water are a driving factor?
No, we have water right now. Basically, it's a redundancy. Right now, everything is fed out of the west side. So I think just as far as a safety standpoint, if anything ever did happen to that plant over there, they have no backup plan. So I think, you know, and I think they have visions of expanding other places. Penfield has sewer, or, excuse me, water throughout, so we are well-covered throughout town. I think it's more of, one, it's backup, and two, if that plant had ever gone down, or has issue, or they need to shut it down for maintenance, you know, they do have a backup to that. So they had gone up to Plank Road, I believe, last year. This year they're looking to go from Plank further north and connecting into Webster from there.
Yeah, Mark, I do.
Yep, go ahead.
What, what's the future plans for Dolomite on Wayland, on Wayland Road there? I mean, they're going to be digging, and they've been digging for years, but they're going to have to stop sometime.
They say they have another 50 years.
Is that right?
In there at least. So, you know, we've, we've asked them, you know, we keep in contact with them, but as of right now, they said, you know, they're not stopping for the foreseeable future. So they are going to continue, I guess, as long as they can. Once that's done, yeah, we'd like to have a plan with that, because there are pumps in there right now that pump that down and keep that dry. Once those pumps shut off, you know, that'll fill up and be a big lake as well. So, you know, it'd be nice to see some development around that, was, you know, cohesive with that, and, you know, took advantage of, you know, hopefully it would be a nice lake there also. I know we have a few minutes left, but I just have a couple quick synopsises. This was a town board application, so I didn't have it earlier. This is South Point Cove. As you go down Empire Boulevard, this is kind of looking up the street, but if you look down, Basil's would be down here. So as you're coming down the hill, right now it was being cleared as a sandhill for many years. They kind of were cutting the hill down. So this, as you're coming from Baytown Plaza, you're heading down Empire Boulevard. You're heading west, going towards Arundicote. On the right-hand side, the town board has approved apartment complex called South Point Cove. This is kind of a look up one of their streets, on-street parking, landscaped islands down the middle of it, and then views of the bay. And this is Arundicote Bay here, down the bottom of the hill. Jeremiah's Tavern. This is being proposed across from Target. This entrance is, comes in now. In the back is Doodle Bugs, new restaurant that is coming before, or was before the town board the last week for a public hearing. They're looking to move forward on this application. Mott's Lane. Hopefully, this is the year that we finally get it connected. This is the Four Corners is, is here. Here's Penfield Road, Liberty Street, Mott's Lane. This is the Man Owen Building here, gas station at the corner. It comes down and it stops right about here, which I believe is now Signatures. It's no longer the Humphrey House. But there is a connection to come down here and then, and connect it in the back across from Liberty Street. So you could pull in and access these buildings from behind. And we've been working on this for many years and...
No buildings are going to come down?
No buildings are coming down. It's just a matter of extension of the road. We did some parking expansion here. We have a little bit of grading work to do behind Dr. Petro's office, and then loop that around, and then tie that in here. We are still working with the state DOT that someday we'd like to realign Liberty Street back to where it was. Liberty Street used to be over here further. Now it's over here, and then look at the possibility of getting a traffic light there, but the state DOT isn't handling those out very often.
Well, you won't line up. You really won't line up.
Not currently, it will not. Not currently. And they want it to be right in, right out right now. The hotel property in Panorama Trail, this property's set empty for a number of years now. We have had discussions. Popeyes is next door, Nell G. Nunk is right behind it. On Panorama Trail, this is set vacant for a number of years. We've actually just had recent meetings with the developer of what they want to do with it. They're not sure. They just want to do something with it. So that's still kind of hanging out there. Another one that's kind of, you know, been a little bit of an eyesore is Classy Chassis. This is now just kind of a concrete pile of rubble down on Penfield Road again. There's ESL Bank right by the post office. They want to put a car wash there. There are some environmental concerns. It used to be, I believe it was carriage cleaners. It was carriage, it used to be a, a dry cleaner. So there are some environmental issues with that. So they're working on cleaning those up and, and trying to rectify that, but they're looking to put in a, a car wash in that space. With that, that's all I have for you guys today. If anybody else has any questions or, if not, thank you very much for coming out.